There's a car that just pulled up, was that him?
Is that a Mustang?
Yeah, it is. Throwing his hair out.
And can I have a motion for approval of the minutes as listed in our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
If a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And item two is the Finance Director, Comptroller submitting to the City of West Dallas 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Chris, have at it, please.
All right, thank you. I'm actually going to turn things over to Jordan Bame, who's here from Clifton, Larson Allen, who can... He's going to provide kind of an overview of, kind of summary of results for 2019, just kind of an overview of the audit, so.
Jordan, sounds good. Thanks, Chris. So, thank you everybody for having me, I guess. First question, am I coming through okay with the mask on? Okay. So, just a few items, I know you have a busy schedule, that I do want to highlight is CLA was the independent auditors for the City of West Dallas for this year, for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2019 audit report. Few items on the agenda that I just hope to cover is that we're ultimately the independent auditors report that was issued. Couple, little commentary on general fund budget and fund balance. A quick note on some of the deficit fund balances you would see related to certain funds and the plan to recover those deficits. And then ultimately the governance communications and then some of the recommendations and best practices we have for performing our audit. Okay, so the independent auditors report, in that nice big, heavy pack of financial statement that everybody gets. Can you come to the table or get closer to the mic?
Sure, sorry.
A lot of layer mic?
So, in that large document that we provide, that gets put together, the auditor's opinion is actually only about three pages long. That's where we provide the results of our audit. And we, what we do is provide results on the audit from the perspective of your governmental activities, your business type activities, and each of the major funds, so think general fund, capital, capital projects fund, those types of things. As well as the inclusion of the FIRE financial statements as well in the report. So, the results of all of our work that we do over the course of many months, and we really ask a lot of questions and ask for a lot of supporting documentation from Chris and her team, resulted in an unmodified opinion, so accounting language means clean. So, the financial statements that you have in front of you, in our opinion, reflect materially the financial results and position of the City of West Dallas. So, the budgetary items that I have are just a couple items of note. I won't dive too deep into the details because of the fact that the audit work that we performed did not result in any changes to your general fund. So, the information you've been getting related to your general fund, we concluded is proper and accurate. So, with that being said, just looking at the revenue side of things, just one thing I wanted to highlight, the orange bar is the actual results. The blue bar is the budget, your final budget. And in each of the revenue categories, you did have a slight surplus to a, from the perspective of what you planned for. So, that's a good thing. From the expenditure side of things, again, same format, orange being actual, blue being final budget. There was a, there was one overage to note, that that was related to public safety. So, with that, when we have overages, one thing we do recommend is that you look at the process, whether it's re-appropriating certain funds or making an amendment to that budget so that you have a formal process around that. So, that's my note there. Before I move forward beyond kind of just this kind of preliminary and internal financial and budget results, is there any questions as of yet? Okay. So, from a fund balance standpoint, also another important item that is heavily looked at by the public and by the committees, would be your unassigned fund balance, and the city has a policy to maintain a fund balance of at least $15 million in that unassigned category, which is the bottom number. Right now, you're at 17.2, and for context, last year, you were at 18.1. So, as you exceed budgets on your expenditures and those budget, budget, or the actual results of the expenditures are exceeding your budget, and you don't have revenues to offset, that could, that is one of the items that results in a drawdown of that unassigned fund balance, because that's what's being consumed in order to pay for those costs. So, there was a slight decrease. The GFOA, which is the Government Finance Organizations Association, recommends typically two to three months of fund balance, non-assigned, and you guys do exceed that, so you do have a healthy fund balance, I'm just pointing it out for note. So, deficit fund balances. One of the reasons that I do like to highlight these are that these, when there's deficits, usually you need to have a planned revenue source to bring this deficit to a break even or a slight surplus. The good news is, is most of your deficits, when we look at it from this perspective, are your TIDs. And the reason for that is you frontload costs on the TIDs, those tax increment districts, to recover the costs on the back end through the increased value in the tax base within that district. So, so long as your tax districts continue to perform as you would expect, those deficits will be recovered in future years. So, there isn't a structural fund balance deficit related to those funds at this time. The one other fund I would note is Public Works Improvement. And really what that relates to is when you do improvements that you would special assess for, are the accounting rules. Basically state that if those revenues aren't collected within a certain period of time beyond year end, we defer them for a future period for when that cash comes in. So, that fund balance deficit will also be financed by the future collections on those special assessments related to those projects. So, similarly, not a structural deficit, it's just performing the work and waiting to receive the cost reimbursement for that work. Okay? So, the governance communication, I will let you know that no is always a good thing with auditors. We, when we don't have a lot to say, that's usually a good sign. So, I do like to note that in the, within the financial statements, the footnotes are categorized 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Within note 1, that's where we have the explanation for the methods by which the numbers are ultimately accounted for and the financial results that you see in those reports. So, if there's anything, as you're going through those reports and you say, "I wonder what that is," you can take a look there to get what I call a high-level summary as to what that activity is, and it may reference you to other parts of the report that have further detail for you to look at. Items like that would include debt, capital assets, your pension, and your OPEB, or other post-employment benefits. So, in 19, there were not any new accounting standards that were adopted, so your 19 report is very consistent with 18, should you choose to look at both next to each other. And no transactions lacked authoritative guidance, that basically means that the city wasn't out on a limb in recording any of their accounting transactions. There was a standard by which they were, that they were applying to recording that transaction, so it conforms to GAAP. Okay? Within the report, there are a number of accounting estimates. So, one of the, one of the fun aspects of financial reporting is getting the report closed out and the year closed out. These estimates primarily affect your governmental activities. So, it's the first set of financial results within that statement. And those are your retiree medical benefits that you would, that you are liable for to future retirees that have been earned to date. Similarly, your participation in the Wisconsin retirement system for the local retiree life insurance and their, and the pension. Good news, and I always like to say this, is participating in WRS is a good thing. That means you're one of the healthiest, you have one of the healthiest funded pensions in the country. So, I think as of the last I saw, it's within the top three in the country, so almost 100% funded as of 2019. Couple other items to note, there is some estimates related to the useful lives of your assets, so think of the building we're in. Finance will make an estimate as to how long the building will last and will expense the building over a period of time, rather than incurring that expense all in one year on those, on those first sets of statements. And then lastly, they're a little bit smaller, but the allowance for doubtful accounts related to any receivables you may have, and your health claims payable and workers' compensation liabilities at the end of the year. So, the audit results. So, we have no particularly sensitive financial statement disclosures. Those types of things would typically only be brought up if there were items relating to going concerns or other significant matters. So, this is a very standard report, and that's a good, that is a good thing. Note, we didn't have any significant difficulties in performing the audit. We did have what we call one uncorrected misstatement. What this means is, is that we, as a part of our audit, we identified one item that was less than material. So, in SCOLP, this was about $100,000, related to the FIRE records. That was an interest that was receivable on one of the notes that they had made to TIF, one of your TIFs. So, we passed on that, that those financial records are audited by other auditors, and they were accepted for inclusion in your report. As, and in addition, we did have two journal entries that we proposed to Chris and her team. And all of the work that we do, which is, we look at things for about 400 hours, give or take, to do this process. So, two items to bring up, and really what they were related to is not day-to-day transactional type of activities from a recognition of receipts as revenue or dispersments as expense. What it really had to do was with the arrangements that the TIDs have with FIRE that can be somewhat complex from how they get reported within the financial statements. So, overall, really, it was a good, good year from that standpoint. We didn't have any disagreements with, with management, Chris hasn't told me about any, so. We do ask for management's representations related to the completeness of the information that's provided, so we just asked management to sign an attestation that said, "If we asked for information, you were able to provide it and it's full set." And then ultimately, no consultations with other accountants, and we didn't have any issues in performing our group audit, which the group audit is the FIRE financial statements in that audit report and working with that audit team. So, from a recommendation and management letter standpoint, so these items are recommendations related to best practice. The first one is the preparation of the financial statements. So, as your auditors, we are contracted to do the initial preparation of the document for review by management. When we do have proposed audit adjustments that are accepted by management, we do have this recommendation related to the handling of those types of transactions. And I know Chris and I have talked at length about TID and the accounting for some of these arrangements and these agreements, and have a plan for kind of tackling these on the front end as we move forward. So, the best practice recommendations, these are items that we bring to the attention of management and really aren't typically meeting the level of needing to communicate to governance. We let you know that we've communicated them because you do get a letter related to it that details it further in your packet. And really, what this kind of boils down to is just, and I know you're working on this through the implementation of DocuWare, is a consistent approach to documenting the review of the transactions that are occurring. We didn't find any transactions that didn't have the appropriate support or detail to validate the transaction. It's just the evidence of the review by the individual who's performing the control to ensure that either the expense is going to the right account or that the revenue is going to the right account. So, these really are just kind of summarized at a very high level. If you do want more detail, it is included in the management letter. So, with that, I wanted to make sure to try to stay somewhat on schedule, I know you've got a busy night. Does the group have any questions that I can answer?
All right, well, thank you very much then, appreciate it. Nice to have a good, clean audit, thanks to everybody.
Yeah, I was gonna say, our last, my last comment always is, thank you to finance and your team. They do a lot of work to help us get through this process, so, and they're fantastic to work with.
Yep, to Chris, who should be our new Finance Director.
It's just such a tall order.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. Yep.
Thank you. All right, then I'll start reading us into closed session for items 3 and 4. For Agenda Items 3 and 4, the committee may convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.851 FT, Wisconsin Statutes, for the purpose of considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data for specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where Paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations or conferring with legal counsel or governmental body which has rendered oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adapted, adopted by a body with respect to litigation, which it is highly likely to be coming involved. And for item 4, here it goes. For the purpose of considering financial, okay, I read that part. And that's the same thing, all right, good.
Move, we're going to closed session, second.
And we have a motion and a second, and Alderman Ligo?
Aye.
And Alder Person King?
Aye.
And Alderman Tenorio?
Aye.
And Alderman Lysick?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, all right, we are in closed session. Who wants to start?
911, what's your emergency?
911, a lifesaving number to call when you are in dire need of emergency services, and it can be overwhelmed sometimes by those who are frequent callers. Most of these people don't realize how often they call for emergency services. They are often alone, scared, elderly, frail, or have mental health issues that drive them to call 911 over and over again. to call 911 over and over again. The West Alice Fire Department has a program to address the needs of these people. It's the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program. It's designed to help people who lack connection to a primary healthcare provider or have social and mental health needs and then reduce their dependence on the emergency 911 system.
The Mobile Healthcare Program originated really back in the late 1990s when the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration published a document called EMS Agenda for the Future Implementation Guide. And what it did is it identified that EMS could do much more for their patients. It wasn't about always taking the patient to the emergency department. For the last couple of years, we've been meeting with some of our medical partners in the community and having discussions and discussing the fact that we can provide better care for our patients by taking them to alternative locations, not necessarily the emergency department all the time. Oftentimes, the healthcare they need can be better provided at a medical home, like their primary care physician's office, not to the emergency department. We love the concept, we know there's a lot to it, and so we, we travel down to Texas where they've got some very well-developed mobile integrated healthcare programs. And once we got down there, it just reaffirmed that we're on the right path here. We got a good program, we just need to develop it for our community to see how we can best serve our residents and our citizens.
The Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program has three main principles: educate, navigate, and advocate.
The three elements of the program are to educate, navigate, and advocate for the patient. The educational piece is to sit down with the patient, make sure they totally understand what their healthcare needs are, and, and make sure that they're connected with a physician. Make sure that they, they're taking their prescriptions as they need to. And then the navigational piece is to assure the patient knows where they can go to get the best healthcare, the most cost-effective healthcare, and not necessarily go back to the emergency department over and over again to get that care. And then finally, the advocate. And that's, we, we sit down and we connect all the healthcare providers together to make sure we're all working in concert to provide the best care for the patient.
When we first meet with the patient, we find out who's involved in their care. We want to get the patient into a medical home, which is usually their primary care physician. We connect up with all of the partners that are involved in the patient's care, and we try and develop a common plan for that patient's care.
The focus is on the patients, their needs, giving them better healthcare, connecting them to a primary provider who will know them and what they need as opposed to going to the ER all the time.
So a normal 911 call, what happens is, a person ends up having a medical emergency, calls 911, the paramedic shows up. What we find is that the person has had some kind of deficiency of taking care of themselves for whatever medical need it is. So the paramedics come there, they stabilize, transport that person to the hospital. Once they get to the hospital, they'll kind of do a long-term care for them, a couple days, give them some medications, give them some new directives, and then send them home. At this point, the person doesn't understand the medications, they don't continue with the proper care, their conditions progress, and they call 911 again. And the system just kind of goes in a cycle and a cycle. It's kind of the cycle that's been going on for, since EMS probably has really started. So what mobile, mobile healthcare does is we kind of stop that cycle. We get to that house before that medical emergency becomes a 911 call. We're there to kind of educate them, navigate them, and then take them to the proper resource at that point.
Visiting patients on a daily basis or weekly basis even versus only seeing them during 911 calls, we actually are able to understand the patient's medical condition, understand who the patient actually is, where they're coming from, what sort of medical care they're being provided. We're able to advocate for the patient. We found that some patients don't have a primary doctor, which is obviously a problem. They're just using the 911 system in the hospitals as their doctor. So we're able to get them into a primary doctor, allow them to establish a relationship with that person, and get the care that they need.
Well, most of the time I was housebound and alone and always wondering what I'd do if something happened. And now, now it's so much different. I mean, the fire department is like family and friends, and my helpers come over and we all talk to each other and they explain what they're doing here. And my friends will talk about themselves. And they've helped me get equipment for the house, fire alarm, and they're helping me get a walker with a seat on it. And just a lot of screwing into light bulbs that burn down, a lot of different things.
The program also has benefit to the community as it reduces healthcare costs and helps improve the health of the community.
By improving the quality of care, we have increased patient satisfaction. In addition, we have fire department resources that are more available for the community, and decreasing that quantity of care increases the quality for the entire community.
Well, it's more peace of mind. I don't worry about, you know, whether my meds are working or whether they're not working. Because they, during every week, check my blood pressure and my pulse, and, and everything seems to be running on a more even basis. And so I'm wanting to see the doctor the day before yesterday, and he's downgrading one of my meds from 20 milligrams to 10 milligrams. That's all, I don't have the hypertension because I know I'm doing okay because they're checking everything.
I, I feel a lot safer. I feel like I know more people and that I would know what to do if something did happen. And if I have a problem, I can always call them. And they come once a week, and if something does happen, I know it can wait a week till they come. I don't want to bother them. And it's, it's just entirely different now. I'm, I'm a happier person because I, I have the business to look forward to.
Reducing the number of calls to our emergency system, decreasing readmission rates, and improving the healthcare and quality of life for these patients. That's what the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program is all about.
I represent a group we call ourselves Pelham's Battery. It's Confederate artillery. And Major John Pelham fought for Alabama during the Civil War. He had an appointment at West Point from 1858 on, never graduated. Two weeks prior to graduation, the state of Alabama took a vote and they voted to succeed from the Union. And at that time, poor Pelham didn't know what he wanted to do. He wanted to finish school, he wanted to get his commission, he wanted to make a career out of the military, but his people in Alabama said, you better come home now while the getting's good. So he and his roommate, Tom Rosser, who was from Virginia, left West Point in the middle of the night, two weeks prior to graduation. Made their way back to Alabama, Rosser went back to Virginia, they took up arms against the North. The year was 1861 when Alabama succeeded from the Union, and John Pelham came back there with his military experience from West Point, was made a lieutenant. And as much as he wanted to be a cavalryman, because he was one heck of a horseman, and he proved that through West Point his time there, but Alabama says, you know what, I think we need you more in the artillery. So they put him in artillery, and he became a brilliant, brilliant artillerist. This is a replica of a 12-pound howitzer. The bore, you noticed, is kind of small, and the question is, how do you get a 12-pound ball down that bore? Well, when the cannon was made, the bore was made to just about three inches, and we decided not to bore it out any larger for economic reasons. It would cost more to bore it out, and then it'd cost more to shoot it. Right now, this is about a seven-eighths scale 12-pound howitzer that was used basically out in the Western campaign. Very little of the howitzers were used out east, but one of the nice things about this cannon, it, it was basically a defensive gun, and you could hide it behind bushes, you could hide it in tree lines, and the only telltale sign of when you fired your cannon was, of course, the huge plume of smoke created by the black powder. It is a black powder cannon. It's muzzle-loaded, and the implements that you'll see here are used in choreography with the procedure for loading and firing the gun. It takes five guys to operate this gun. Any muzzle-loading cannon, whether it be a six-pound howitzer, 12-pound, 10-pound parrot, anything that's muzzle-loaded, the procedure is the same. The number of men to, to handle the gun is the same. And there's procedures in place so that it's safe. We pride ourselves on safety. We've never had anybody get hurt. We plan on keeping it that way. And even though it doesn't shoot any kind of projectile, it is still a cannon. And the concussion out of the muzzle of this thing, if you're close enough, it will hurt you. The concussion of the gun is 180 degrees, so it goes off to the side as well as forward of the gun. John Pelham, when he became an artillerist, hooked up with Jeb Stuart, became part of his Light Horse Artillery. They had very successful campaign, but unfortunately, John Pelham met his demise at Kelly's Ford, which is along the Repahannock River in Virginia between Culpeper and Fredericksburg, and was March 17th, 1863. So he never even made it to Gettysburg. He was killed by an aerial burst round from a Union gun that caught a piece of shrapnel out of the back of his head, knocked him off his horse. He died the next day at the ripe old age of 24 years old. Right now, I'm demonstrating the 1890s blacksmithing. I'm using an old-time forge. This forge is called a River's Forge. It dates back in the 1890s is when actually, when they started to sell these. Now I'm using coal for fuel, and I got a piece of iron in here right now that I'm making into an S-hook. That's about 2,000 degrees when it's heated up like that. And I'm gonna hammer it out to a point. After I have it, I hammer it out to a point, I'll round the four edges on it. Then we're gonna put a little monkey tail on it. Little monkey tail is just a little round circle, so you don't have a sharp point to hook yourself on. So you got a little round circle. Now we're gonna warm it back up a little bit. Like I said, when it comes out red, it's about 2,000 degrees. That's one of the irons you don't want to pick up. The other one, I always tell the people, if you're going to a blacksmith shop, don't pick up a gray one because that's gonna be hot also. Now because the red is real hot on that point, we're gonna cool it off in water so I don't flatten that little circle out. Now we got the little hook made. Now we're gonna heat the center up, put a little twist in it. I had the other end already made. As I pump the handle up and down, it turns this blower, and that's what's forcing the air. I'm using quarter-inch square stock. The anvil probably dates back into about 1700s. This is, everything I have here is all antiques. They're all old. I'm gonna cool it off a little bit on that end. You want it to red in the middle, so that's where you're gonna twist it. And you just turn the two, and you get across from each other, then you re-grip it, touch it up a little bit so it's straight. Then we're gonna take this steel brush and clean it. And after we have it cleaned, I'm gonna cool it off just a little bit. Then we're gonna take this brush, which is brass. The reason I cool it off is brass melts at a lot lower temperature, and we're gonna turn this gold color. The brass will actually melt onto the iron and turn it gold color. Once I get it on there, we're gonna take beeswax and put coating over the top so it won't rust. They didn't have a spray paint back then, so they used beeswax or linseed oil. This is beeswax. It's on the dark side because it's been used over and over. You just recycle it. We're gonna do the same thing on the other end. And we got a little S-hook. This one has two different ends. This has a little monkey tail, this has a little flattened tail on it. So you got two different shapes on it. So that's how you make the little S-hooks. This is 22 years. A buddy of mine, by the name of Mike Smith, him and I, he wanted to get into camping. He checked out a rendezvous, and we seen another blacksmith doing it. And him and I both started at the same time. Unfortunately, he passed away a couple of years ago, so he's not doing it anymore. There's not very many blacksmiths around anymore. It's a good little hobby. We make a little extra money doing it, helps pay bills, and it, it's a lot of fun. You meet a lot of nice people, and so that's how we got started.
I'm the land sergeant for Baron Ursa Alexander Guthrie. I'm the man responsible for training the militia of the fourth Baron of Guthrie, who is... is the Lord Warden of the marches of Scotland from 1525 to 1575. The marches were established in the early 1500s, right around 1505, in answer to Scotland becoming an independent country. At the time, a state of unofficial warfare existed between Scotland and England from 1505 all the way through to 1610. At that time, both sides created wardens to watch the borders. These wardens had parties of men who acted as border patrol. They were called Reavers. The reason they were called Reavers was because during the day, they would patrol the borders, watch for incursions. At night, they would cross the borders and raid their counterparts' villages, steal cattle, steal the resources, and take them back over the border. The term "reaving" comes from the actual border reaving, back and forth, sometimes 40 miles in a day, north or south. So, you would, if you lived on the borders of England and Scotland between 1505 and 1610 during that period, it was not uncommon for the borders to change so dramatically that at the beginning of the month, you might be under the protection of an English warden. At the end of the month, you might be under the protection of a Scottish warden because the border had shifted 20 miles to the north or 20 miles to the south. Right now, this is actually Ursa Alexander Guthrie. And right now, what he is doing is he is attaching rivets and tooling and creating a cover for a tarj, which is a Scottish shield. Once he is done with the rivets and everything like that, he's going to be doing some tooling, creating some design work, and then that will be sewn onto the front of the shield right over here to the right to finish that out. Then, the leather will be dyed and painted, and then it'll be finished, and it'll be ready to be used.
Today, I'm representing the Grand Armory of the Republic, the formerly of the Third Wisconsin Infantry Reenactment Group. All right, now, your question was on this particular colors, which I made back a dozen years ago or so. This is actually a flag. You notice the canton is a star of stars. The canton is the blue section up there with 35 stars on it. Now, this flag was actually based upon the Second Massachusetts flag. The Third Wisconsin, from the beginning of the Civil War, actually were so close to the Second Wisconsin. From the first day, we were brigaded with the Second Massachusetts Infantry. And they were our best friends. So, I made this flag, and it didn't designate the Second Massachusetts, but I use it as a generic flag as part of it. Now, the canton up here, the blue section, they were, it was not established by Congress until 1912, how to set up the star field in a flag, till 1912. So, you could put your stars up there any way you want. That's why you'll see so many Civil War flags that are different. Now, today, you have the American Legion, you have the Veterans of Foreign Wars. With the Grand Armory of the Republic, we're just Civil War ex-Union soldiers. And all the veterans, all the benefits they have today is because of these boys. Between 1866 and, say, about 1900, they got their benefits. They were so politically powerful. They elected presidents, unelected them. Five out of six presidents between the end of the Civil War and 1900 were essentially Grand Armory of the Republic members. But every town, if you go into Milwaukee and some of the old buildings, you'll see G.A.R. up there. They don't even know what they're from anymore. But they died out in 1949 when the Union disbanded, or when the organization disbanded with the last five veterans. When I first joined the Union in 1989, they didn't have a flag. So, I decided I wanted to make one. So, I did. I made the first one, which I still have at home. The second one I made for the unit, and we flew it because nobody else had a flag. And all the reenacting, we started it. And then, I started making some flags for some other units who wanted flags. So, now, everybody's got flags these days. All right? And I guess I think a flag is a big part of the unit and the camaraderie that you have. All right? And so, it's just the little things make things important, is what it is. It's the little things. The colors. You march in a parade with a flag. The flag, as you'll notice, is not what we have, like a three-by-five or a six-by-eight. This is almost square, six-and-a-half by six feet, which was the standard colors, the size according to regulations of the Civil War era for the units. That's what it was, six by six-and-a-half, you know, feet. So, it was almost perfectly square. But I'll tell you, when you get a color guard and you're marching down there, it makes you feel so proud. Actually, they have the colors, and you'll find people saluting it and everything else. And on the Civil War flags, you'll find either, you know, 34 or 35 stars, depending on when the states come in. This is actually the standard bugle of the Civil War. It's a French claron. There are thousands of these imported from France. So, this was the standard one. They got away from drums because drums were so, so low in their tone that these give out orders. As a bugler, for the infantry alone, it would be about 49 bugle calls I have to learn just for the infantry. Master bugler, triple that for the cavalry and the artillery. But this gave out orders. I could tell you to do anything with this bugle, backwards, forwards, to the right, to the left, you know, fall back, everything. This is the field phone of its day, is the bugle. All right? So, right now, I'll just, basically, I'll just play attention, which would actually, I would be calling the regiment into line with full kit and rifles ready to move out to battle. That'd be an attention call. That would be attention. So, everybody come running. They put on their leather gear, and they all get in formation in line, ready to go. You know, ready for battle.
The sweetest flower that grows. You may search everywhere, but none can compare with my wild Irish rose. My wild Irish rose. The dearest flower that grows. And someday for my staying, she may let me take a bloom from my wild Irish rose. I rose. The bloom from my wild Irish rose.
Fire!
We'd love hands off there.
I've never had a problem.
I'm here with a group called Historical Timekeepers, and we represent civilian occupations during the Civil War era. And I am portraying a Civil War era schoolmaster and pastor. As a schoolmaster and pastor, I'm concerned with the health of the people in my congregation and the children in the school. And so, I'm presenting information about horse pollution back in the 1860 era, the Civil War era. Milwaukee, when they had a population of 350,000 people in the 1800s, had a population of 12,500 horses in the city. These were just the ones that lived in the city, plus others that came in during the day from the outlying farms. These horses, just that lived in the city, produced about 133 tons of manure and 40,000 to 50,000 gallons of urine every day on the city streets. When it would rain, that manure would turn into a liquefied manure slush. Streets, of course, back then were dirt streets. When wagons would pass, people would get splashed with this liquefied manure. The wagons would churn that manure into dust, which would settle on food and drink. People complained about having to breathe pulverized horse dung. Epidemics were rampant back at that time, cholera, typhoid, various other things because of breathing and eating all of this pulverized horse dung and other filth that was on the streets. So, with the coming of the automobile, our cities now are much, much cleaner than they were back in the days of horse and buggies. The horses were used to pull the city streetcars. The first city streetcars were horse-drawn. Fire engines were drawn by the horses. The city used horse-drawn wagons to collect the ashes and the garbage. So, there were lots of horses in the city. A lot of people did have them. The horse-drawn streetcars themselves cut down on pollution because if you had, say, 10 people riding a horse car, that meant instead of 10 horses, you only had the two that were pulling it. And those two horses would be serving a lot of people, including the ones that couldn't afford their own horse. So, the horses pulling the streetcars themselves cut down pollution quite a bit in the city.
My name is Doug Smith, and I'm representing a Confederate artillery captain with what would be called horse artillery or flying artillery, the units that usually went out in support of cavalry units. The standard Civil War artillery piece of the day was a muzzle-loading piece. In this case, the gun we have on display here is what's called a mountain howitzer. The mountain howitzer used approximately a half-pound charge there, firing a 12-pound ball. It's a four-and-five-eighths inch bore on the actual piece. This gun was made primarily to be broken apart and shipped on three mules. However, with the particular carriage that it's on, this carriage could also be attached to a two-wheeled limber cart, which had ammunition chests on it. And the cart was pulled by two horses. The mountain carriage there was slightly taller wheels and a little bit narrower axle width. Not a common gun during the Civil War. Most of your field pieces were larger, had 57-inch wheels as standard. The, came in a variety of weights and sizes there, but primarily, you had either smoothbore artillery or you had rifled. Your prime smoothbore gun of the war there was what they called the smoothbore light gun of 1857, which was more commonly known as a Napoleon. Napoleon was made of bronze for the most part. The Confederates did make a few out of iron. But the basics of the gun was that it would be able to do everything the older 12-pounders would do, but it used less metal in its manufacture. The gun fired four different types of ammunition. It would fire ball. It would fire shell, which was hollowed-out ball, and it was fused to explode. You also had what was called case shot, which was the shell which had the addition of additional iron shot inside of it. And then, the very last round that they fired, and statistically, the most dangerous round of the war, what was called canister. Canister would convert the gun into a giant shotgun. 12-pound canister shot for the Napoleon contained 64 iron balls in a tin can. And like I say, at ranges of 400 yards or less there, it was very deadly to attacking infantry and cavalry. The basics of this gun is that it is a muzzle loader. There were some breech loaders during the Civil War. They were imported, Armstrong's, Whitworth guns there. They were all, they were British-made guns. The Whitworth especially had some phenomenal ranges. But your average range of a piece, your Napoleon's fired about 1,600 yards max. Your two common rifles there, iron rifled guns there, three-inch rifles, I should say, what they called the three-inch ordnance rifle of 1861. And that gun had a range of about 1,800 yards. The parrot gun, which was a similar piece, but made out of cast iron rather than wrought iron like the three-inch ordnance rifle, it had a range of about 1,830 yards is what it was rated at. Napoleon was the mate of all work for Civil War artillery, but the, it was also the swan song for the bronze smoothbore gun. Because the rifled guns, while they didn't pack the punch for field pieces, but if you could make them bigger, and they did make them bigger, for siege guns and garrison pieces and the like, they had greater range, greater accuracy. And as the technology developed, they made them to pack more of a punch.
Fire! Clear! Fire! Fire! Hey! 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 Bull barrel, honey. Let go. Fire! Three! Hey! 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 Bull barrel, honey. Let go. Fire! Fire! Hey! 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 Fire! Fire! Hey! 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 Hey![1636.31] (Clerk) Fire![253.23][253.23](Clerk) There you go![254.23][254.23](Clerk) Clear![255.23][255.23](Clerk) Fire![256.23][256.23](Clerk) There you go![257.23][257.23](Clerk) Woo![258.23][258.23](Clerk) Fire![259.23][259.23](Clerk) Woo![260.23][260.23](Clerk) Ready![261.23][261.23](Clerk) Hey![262.23][262.23](Clerk) Hey![263.23][263.23](Clerk) Hey![264.23][264.23](Clerk) Hey![265.23][265.23](Clerk) Hey![266.23][266.23](Clerk) Hey![267.23][267.23](Clerk) Hey![268.23][268.23](Clerk) Hey![269.23][269.23](Clerk) Hey![270.23][270.23](Clerk) Hey![271.23][271.23](Clerk) Hey![272.23][272.23](Clerk) Hey![273.23][273.23](Clerk) Hey![274.23][274.23](Clerk) Hey![275.23][275.23](Clerk) Hey![276.23][276.23](Clerk) Hey![277.23][277.23](Clerk) Hey![278.23][278.23](Clerk) Hey![279.23][279.23](Clerk) Hey![280.23][280.23](Clerk) Hey![281.23][281.23](Clerk) Hey![282.23][282.23](Clerk) Hey![283.23][283.23](Clerk) Hey![284.23][284.23](Clerk) Hey![285.23][285.23](Clerk) Hey![286.23][286.23](Clerk) Hey![287.23][287.23](Clerk) Hey![288.23][288.23](Clerk) Hey![289.23][289.23](Clerk) Hey![290.23][290.23](Clerk) Hey![291.23][291.23](Clerk) Hey![292.23][292.23](Clerk) Hey![293.23][293.23](Clerk) Hey![294.23][294.23](Clerk) Hey![295.23][295.23](Clerk) Hey![296.23][296.23](Clerk) Hey![297.23][297.23](Clerk) Hey![298.23][298.23](Clerk) Hey![299.23][299.23](Clerk) Hey![300.23][300.23](Clerk) Hey![301.23][301.23](Clerk) Hey![302.23][302.23](Clerk) Hey![303.23][303.23](Clerk) Hey![304.23][304.23](Clerk) Hey![305.23][305.23](Clerk) Hey![306.23][306.23](Clerk) Hey![307.23][307.23](Clerk) Hey![308.23][308.23](Clerk) Hey![309.23][309.23](Clerk) Hey![310.23][310.23](Clerk) Hey![311.23][311.23](Clerk) Hey![312.23][312.23](Clerk) Hey![313.23][313.23](Clerk) Hey![314.23][314.23](Clerk) Hey![315.23][315.23](Clerk) Hey![316.23][316.23](Clerk) Hey![317.23][317.23](Clerk) Hey![318.23][318.23](Clerk) Hey![319.23][319.23](Clerk) Hey![320.23][320.23](Clerk) Hey![321.23][321.23](Clerk) Hey![322.23][322.23](Clerk) Hey![323.23][323.23](Clerk) Hey![324.23][324.23](Clerk) Hey![325.23][325.23](Clerk) Hey![326.23][326.23](Clerk) Hey![327.23][327.23](Clerk) Hey![328.23][328.23](Clerk) Hey![329.23][329.23](Clerk) Hey![330.23][330.23](Clerk) Hey![331.23][331.23](Clerk) Hey![332.23][332.23](Clerk) Hey![333.23][333.23](Clerk) Hey![334.23][334.23](Clerk) Hey![335.23][335.23](Clerk) Hey![336.23][336.23](Clerk) Hey![337.23][337.23](Clerk) Hey![338.23][338.23](Clerk) Hey![339.23][339.23](Clerk) Hey![340.23][340.23](Clerk) Hey![341.23][341.23](Clerk) Hey![342.23][342.23](Clerk) Hey![343.23][343.23](Clerk) Hey![344.23][344.23](Clerk) Hey![345.23][345.23](Clerk) Hey![346.23][346.23](Clerk) Hey![347.23][347.23](Clerk) Hey![348.23][348.23](Clerk) Hey![349.23][349.23](Clerk) Hey![350.23][350.23](Clerk) Hey![351.23][351.23](Clerk) Hey![352.23][352.23](Clerk) Hey![353.23][353.23](Clerk) Hey![354.23][354.23](Clerk) Hey![355.23][355.23](Clerk) Hey![356.23][356.23](Clerk) Hey![357.23][357.23](Clerk) Hey![358.23][358.23](Clerk) Hey![359.23][359.23](Clerk) Hey![360.23][360.23](Clerk) Hey![361.23][361.23](Clerk) Hey![362.23][362.23](Clerk) Hey![363.23][363.23](Clerk) Hey![364.23][364.23](Clerk) Hey![365.23][365.23](Clerk) Hey![366.23][366.23](Clerk) Hey![367.23][367.23](Clerk) Hey![368.23][368.23](Clerk) Hey![369.23][369.23](Clerk) Hey![370.23][370.23](Clerk) Hey![371.23][371.23](Clerk) Hey![372.23][372.23](Clerk) Hey![373.23][373.23](Clerk) Hey![374.23][374.23](Clerk) Hey![375.23][375.23](Clerk) Hey![376.23][376.23](Clerk) Hey![377.23][377.23](Clerk) Hey![378.23][378.23](Clerk) Hey![379.23][379.23](Clerk) Hey![380.23][380.23](Clerk) Hey![381.23][381.23](Clerk) Hey![382.23][382.23](Clerk) Hey![383.23][383.23](Clerk) Hey![384.23][384.23](Clerk) Hey![385.23][385.23](Clerk) Hey![386.23][386.23](Clerk) Hey![387.23][387.23](Clerk) Hey![388.23][388.23](Clerk) Hey![389.23][389.23](Clerk) Hey![390.23][390.23](Clerk) Hey![391.23][391.23](Clerk) Hey![392.23][392.23](Clerk) Hey![393.23][393.23](Clerk) Hey![394.23][394.23](Clerk) Hey![395.23][395.23](Clerk) Hey![396.23][396.23](Clerk) Hey![397.23][397.23](Clerk) Hey![398.23][398.23](Clerk) Hey![399.23][399.23](Clerk) Hey![400.23][400.23](Clerk) Hey![401.23][401.23](Clerk) Hey![402.23][402.23](Clerk) Hey![403.23][403.23](Clerk) Hey![404.23][404.23](Clerk) Hey![405.23][405.23](Clerk) Hey![406.23][406.23](Clerk) Hey![407.23][407.23](Clerk) Hey![408.23][408.23](Clerk) Hey![409.23][409.23](Clerk) Hey![410.23][410.23](Clerk) Hey![411.23][411.23](Clerk) Hey![412.23][412.23](Clerk) Hey![413.23][413.23](Clerk) Hey![414.23][414.23](Clerk) Hey![415.23][415.23](Clerk) Hey![416.23][416.23](Clerk) Hey![417.23][417.23](Clerk) Hey![418.23][418.23](Clerk) Hey![419.23][419.23](Clerk) Hey![420.23][420.23](Clerk) Hey![421.23][421.23](Clerk) Hey![422.23][422.23](Clerk) Hey![423.23][423.23](Clerk) Hey![424.23][424.23](Clerk) Hey![425.23][425.23](Clerk) Hey![426.23][426.23](Clerk) Hey![427.23][427.23](Clerk) Hey![428.23][428.23](Clerk) Hey![429.23][429.23](Clerk) Hey![430.23][430.23](Clerk) Hey![431.23][431.23](Clerk) Hey![432.23][432.23](Clerk) Hey![433.23][433.23](Clerk) Hey![434.23][434.23](Clerk) Hey![435.23][435.23](Clerk) Hey![436.23][436.23](Clerk) Hey![437.23][437.23](Clerk) Hey![438.23][438.23](Clerk) Hey![439.23][439.23](Clerk) Hey![440.23][440.23](Clerk) Hey![441.23][441.23](Clerk) Hey![442.23][442.23](Clerk) Hey![443.23][443.23](Clerk) Hey![444.23][444.23](Clerk) Hey![445.23][445.23](Clerk) Hey![446.23][446.23](Clerk) Hey![447.23][447.23](Clerk) Hey![448.23][448.23](Clerk) Hey![449.23][449.23](Clerk) Hey![450.23][450.23](Clerk) Hey![451.23][451.23](Clerk) Hey![452.23][452.23](Clerk) Hey![453.23][453.23](Clerk) Hey![454.23][454.23](Clerk) Hey![455.23][455.23](Clerk) Hey![456.23][456.23](Clerk) Hey![457.23][457.23](Clerk) Hey![458.23][458.23](Clerk) Hey![459.23][459.23](Clerk) Hey![460.23][460.23](Clerk) Hey![461.23][461.23](Clerk) Hey![462.23][462.23](Clerk) Hey![463.23][463.23](Clerk) Hey![464.23][464.23](Clerk) Hey![465.23][465.23](Clerk) Hey![466.23][466.23](Clerk) Hey![467.23][467.23](Clerk) Hey![468.23][468.23](Clerk) Hey![469.23][469.23](Clerk) Hey![470.23][470.23](Clerk) Hey![471.23][471.23](Clerk) Hey![472.23][472.23](Clerk) Hey![473.23][473.23](Clerk) Hey![474.23][474.23](Clerk) Hey![475.23][475.23](Clerk) Hey![476.23][476.23](Clerk) Hey![477.23][477.23](Clerk) Hey![478.23][478.23](Clerk) Hey![479.23][479.23](Clerk) Hey![480.23][480.23](Clerk) Hey![481.23][481.23](Clerk) Hey![482.23][482.23](Clerk) Hey![483.23][483.23](Clerk) Hey![484.23][484.23](Clerk) Hey![485.23][485.23](Clerk) Hey![486.23][486.23](Clerk) Hey![487.23][487.23](Clerk) Hey![488.23][488.23](Clerk) Hey![489.23][489.23](Clerk) Hey![490.23][490.23](Clerk) Hey![491.23][491.23](Clerk) Hey![492.23][492.23](Clerk) Hey![493.23][493.23](Clerk) Hey![494.23][494.23](Clerk) Hey![495.23][495.23](Clerk) Hey![496.23][496.23](Clerk) Hey![497.23][497.23](Clerk) Hey![498.23][498.23](Clerk) Hey![499.23][499.23](Clerk) Hey![500.23][500.23](Clerk) Hey![501.23][501.23](Clerk) Hey![502.23][502.23](Clerk) Hey![503.23][503.23](Clerk) Hey![504.23][504.23](Clerk) Hey![505.23][505.23](Clerk) Hey![506.23][506.23](Clerk) Hey![507.23][507.23](Clerk) Hey![508.23][508.23](Clerk) Hey![509.23][509.23](Clerk) Hey![510.23][510.23](Clerk) Hey![511.23][511.23](Clerk) Hey![512.23][512.23](Clerk) Hey![513.23][513.23](Clerk) Hey![514.23][514.23](Clerk) Hey![515.23][515.23](Clerk) Hey![516.23][516.23](Clerk) Hey![517.23][517.23](Clerk) Hey![518.23][518.23](Clerk) Hey![519.23][519.23](Clerk) Hey![520.23][520.23](Clerk) Hey![521.23][521.23](Clerk) Hey![522.23][522.23](Clerk) Hey![523.23][523.23](Clerk) Hey![524.23][524.23](Clerk) Hey![525.23][525.23](Clerk) Hey![526.23][526.23](Clerk) Hey![527.23][527.23](Clerk) Hey![528.23][528.23](Clerk) Hey![529.23][529.23](Clerk) Hey![530.23][530.23](Clerk) Hey![531.23][531.23](Clerk) Hey![532.23][532.23](Clerk) Hey![533.23][533.23](Clerk) Hey![534.23][534.23](Clerk) Hey![535.23][535.23](Clerk) Hey![536.23][536.23](Clerk) Hey![537.23][537.23](Clerk) Hey![538.23][538.23](Clerk) Hey![539.23][539.23](Clerk) Hey![540.23][540.23](Clerk) Hey![541.23][541.23](Clerk) Hey![542.23][542.23](Clerk) Hey![543.23][543.23](Clerk) Hey![544.23][544.23](Clerk) Hey![545.23][545.23](Clerk) Hey![546.23][546.23](Clerk) Hey![547.23][547.23](Clerk) Hey![548.23][548.23](Clerk) Hey![549.23][549.23](Clerk) Hey![550.23][550.23](Clerk) Hey![551.23][551.23](Clerk) Hey![552.23][552.23](Clerk) Hey![553.23][553.23](Clerk) Hey![554.23][554.23](Clerk) Hey![555.23][555.23](Clerk) Hey![556.23][556.23](Clerk) Hey![557.23][557.23](Clerk) Hey![558.23][558.23](Clerk) Hey![559.23][559.23](Clerk) Hey![560.23][560.23](Clerk) Hey![561.23][561.23](Clerk) Hey![562.23][562.23](Clerk) Hey![563.23][563.23](Clerk) Hey![564.23][564.23](Clerk) Hey![565.23][565.23](Clerk) Hey![566.23][566.23](Clerk) Hey![567.23][567.23](Clerk) Hey![568.23][568.23](Clerk) Hey![569.23][569.23](Clerk) Hey![570.23][570.23](Clerk) Hey![571.23][571.23](Clerk) Hey![572.23][572.23](Clerk) Hey![573.23][573.23](Clerk) Hey![574.23][574.23](Clerk) Hey![575.23][575.23](Clerk) Hey![576.23][576.23](Clerk) Hey![577.23][577.23](Clerk) Hey![578.23][578.23](Clerk) Hey![579.23][579.23](Clerk) Hey![580.23][580.23](Clerk) Hey![581.23][581.23](Clerk) Hey![582.23][582.23](Clerk) Hey![583.23][583.23](Clerk) Hey![584.23][584.23](Clerk) Hey![585.23][585.23](Clerk) Hey![586.23][586.23](Clerk) Hey![587.23][587.23](Clerk) Hey![588.23][588.23](Clerk) Hey![589.23][589.23](Clerk) Hey![590.23][590.23](Clerk) Hey![591.23][591.23](Clerk) Hey![592.23][592.23](Clerk) Hey![593.23][593.23](Clerk) Hey![594.23][594.23](Clerk) Hey![595.23][595.23](Clerk) Hey![596.23][596.23](Clerk) Hey![597.23][597.23](Clerk) Hey![598.23][598.23](Clerk) Hey![599.23][599.23](Clerk) Hey![600.23][600.23](Clerk) Hey![601.23][601.23](Clerk) Hey![602.23][602.23](Clerk) Hey![603.23][603.23](Clerk) Hey![604.23][604.23](Clerk) Hey![605.23][605.23](Clerk) Hey![606.23][606.23](Clerk) Hey![607.23][607.23](Clerk) Hey![608.23][608.23](Clerk) Hey![609.23][609.23](Clerk) Hey![610.23][610.23](Clerk) Hey![611.23][611.23](Clerk) Hey![612.23][612.23](Clerk) Hey![613.23][613.23](Clerk) Hey![614.23][614.23](Clerk) Hey![615.23][615.23](Clerk) Hey![616.23][616.23](Clerk) Hey![617.23][617.23](Clerk) Hey![618.23][618.23](Clerk) Hey![619.23][619.23](Clerk) Hey![620.23][620.23](Clerk) Hey![621.23][621.23](Clerk) Hey![622.23][622.23](Clerk) Hey![623.23][623.23](Clerk) Hey![624.23][624.23](Clerk) Hey![625.23][625.23](Clerk) Hey![626.23][626.23](Clerk) Hey![627.23][627.23](Clerk) Hey![628.23][628.23](Clerk) Hey![629.23][629.23](Clerk) Hey![630.23][630.23](Clerk) Hey![631.23][631.23](Clerk) Hey![632.23][632.23](Clerk) Hey![633.23][633.23](Clerk) Hey![634.23][634.23](Clerk) Hey![635.23][635.23](Clerk) Hey![636.23][636.23](Clerk) Hey![637.23][637.23](Clerk) Hey![638.23][638.23](Clerk) Hey![639.23][639.23](Clerk) Hey![640.23][640.23](Clerk) Hey![641.23][641.23](Clerk) Hey![642.23][642.23](Clerk) Hey![643.23][643.23](Clerk) Hey![644.23][644.23](Clerk) Hey![645.23][645.23](Clerk) Hey![646.23][646.23](Clerk) Hey![647.23][647.23](Clerk) Hey![648.23][648.23](Clerk) Hey![649.23][649.23](Clerk) Hey![650.23][650.23](Clerk) Hey![651.23][651.23](Clerk) Hey![652.23][652.23](Clerk) Hey![653.23][653.23](Clerk) Hey![654.23][654.23](Clerk) Hey![655.23][655.23](Clerk) Hey![656.23][656.23](Clerk) Hey![657.23][657.23](Clerk) Hey![658.23][658.23](Clerk) Hey![659.23][659.23](Clerk) Hey![660.23][660.23](Clerk) Hey![661.23][661.23](Clerk) Hey![662.23][662.23](Clerk) Hey![663.23][663.23](Clerk) Hey![664.23][664.23](Clerk) Hey![665.23][665.23](Clerk) Hey![666.23][666.23](Clerk) Hey![667.23][667.23](Clerk) Hey![668.23][668.23](Clerk) Hey![669.23][669.23](Clerk) Hey![670.23][670.23](Clerk) Hey![671.23][671.23](Clerk) Hey![672.23][672.23](Clerk) Hey![673.23][673.23](Clerk) Hey![674.23][674.23](Clerk) Hey![675.23][675.23](Clerk) Hey![676.23][676.23](Clerk) Hey![677.23][677.23](Clerk) Hey![678.23][678.23](Clerk) Hey![679.23][679.23](Clerk) Hey![680.23][680.23](Clerk) Hey![681.23][681.23](Clerk) Hey![682.23][682.23](Clerk) Hey![683.23][683.23](Clerk) Hey![684.23][684.23](Clerk) Hey![685.23][685.23](Clerk) Hey![686.23][686.23](Clerk) Hey![687.23][687.23](Clerk) Hey![688.23][688.23](Clerk) Hey![689.23][689.23](Clerk) Hey![690.23][690.23](Clerk) Hey![691.23][691.23](Clerk) Hey![692.23][692.23](Clerk) Hey![693.23][693.23](Clerk) Hey![694.23][694.23](Clerk) Hey![695.23][695.23](Clerk) Hey![696.23][696.23](Clerk) Hey![697.23][697.23](Clerk) Hey![698.23][698.23](Clerk) Hey![699.23][699.23](Clerk) Hey![700.23][700.23](Clerk) Hey![701.23][701.23](Clerk) Hey![702.23][702.23](Clerk) Hey![703.23][703.23](Clerk) Hey![704.23][704.23](Clerk) Hey![705.23][705.23](Clerk) Hey![706.23][706.23](Clerk) Hey![707.23][707.23](Clerk) Hey![708.23][708.23](Clerk) Hey![709.23][709.23](Clerk) Hey![710.23][710.23](Clerk) Hey![711.23][711.23](Clerk) Hey![712.23][712.23](Clerk) Hey![713.23][713.23](Clerk) Hey![714.23][714.23](Clerk) Hey![715.23][715.23](Clerk) Hey![716.23][716.23](Clerk) Hey![717.23][717.23](Clerk) Hey![718.23][718.23](Clerk) Hey![719.23][719.23](Clerk) Hey![720.23][720.23](Clerk) Hey![721.23][721.23](Clerk) Hey![722.23][722.23](Clerk) Hey![723.23][723.23](Clerk) Hey![724.23][724.23](Clerk) Hey![725.23][725.23](Clerk) Hey![726.23][726.23](Clerk) Hey![727.23][727.23](Clerk) Hey![728.23][728.23](Clerk) Hey![729.23][729.23](Clerk) Hey![730.23][730.23](Clerk) Hey![731.23][731.23](Clerk) Hey![732.23][732.23](Clerk) Hey![733.23][733.23](Clerk) Hey![734.23][734.23](Clerk) Hey![735.23][735.23](Clerk) Hey![736.23][736.23](Clerk) Hey![737.23][737.23](Clerk) Hey![738.23][738.23](Clerk) Hey![739.23][739.23](Clerk) Hey![740.23][740.23](Clerk) Hey![741.23][741.23](Clerk) Hey![742.23][742.23](Clerk) Hey![743.23][743.23](Clerk) Hey![744.23][744.23](Clerk) Hey![745.23][745.23](Clerk) Hey![746.23][746.23](Clerk) Hey![747.23][747.23](Clerk) Hey![748.23][748.23](Clerk) Hey![749.23][749.23](Clerk) Hey![750.23][750.23](Clerk) Hey![751.23][751.23](Clerk) Hey![752.23][752.23](Clerk) Hey![753.23][753.23](Clerk) Hey![754.23][754.23](Clerk) Hey![755.23][755.23](Clerk) Hey![756.23][756.23](Clerk) Hey![757.23][757.23](Clerk) Hey![758.23][758.23](Clerk) Hey![759.23][759.23](Clerk) Hey![760.23][760.23](Clerk) Hey![761.23][761.23](Clerk) Hey![762.23][762.23](Clerk) Hey![763.23][763.23](Clerk) Hey![764.23][764.23](Clerk) Hey![765.23][765.23](Clerk) Hey![766.23][766.23](Clerk) Hey![767.23][767.23](Clerk) Hey![768.23][768.23](Clerk) Hey![769.23][769.23](Clerk) Hey![770.23][770.23](Clerk) Hey![771.23][771.23](Clerk) Hey![772.23][772.23](Clerk) Hey![773.23][773.23](Clerk) Hey![774.23][774.23](Clerk) Hey![775.23][775.23](Clerk) Hey![776.23][776.23](Clerk) Hey![777.23][777.23](Clerk) Hey![778.23][778.23](Clerk) Hey![779.23][779.23](Clerk) Hey![780.23][780.23](Clerk) Hey![781.23][781.23](Clerk) Hey![782.23][782.23](Clerk) Hey![783.23][783.23](Clerk) Hey![784.23][784.23](Clerk) Hey![785.23][785.23](Clerk) Hey![786.23][786.23](Clerk) Hey![787.23][787.23](Clerk) Hey![788.23][788.23](Clerk) Hey![789.23][789.23](Clerk) Hey![790.23][790.23](Clerk) Hey![791.23][791.23](Clerk) Hey![792.23][792.23](Clerk) Hey![793.23][793.23](Clerk) Hey![794.23][794.23](Clerk) Hey![795.23][795.23](Clerk) Hey![796.23][796.23](Clerk) Hey![797.23][797.23](Clerk) Hey![798.23][798.23](Clerk) Hey![799.23][799.23](Clerk) Hey![800.23][800.23](Clerk) Hey![801.23][801.23](Clerk) Hey![802.23][802.23](Clerk) Hey![803.23][803.23](Clerk) Hey![804.23][804.23](Clerk) Hey![805.23][805.23](Clerk) Hey![806.23][806.23](Clerk) Hey![807.23][807.23](Clerk) Hey![808.23][808.23](Clerk) Hey![809.23][809.23](Clerk) Hey![810.23][810.23](Clerk) Hey![811.23][811.23](Clerk) Hey![812.23][812.23](Clerk) Hey![813.23][813.23](Clerk) Hey![814.23][814.23](Clerk) Hey![815.23][815.23](Clerk) Hey![816.23][816.23](Clerk) Hey![817.23][817.23](Clerk) Hey![818.23][818.23](Clerk) Hey![819.23][819.23](Clerk) Hey![820.23][820.23](Clerk) Hey![821.23][821.23](Clerk) Hey![822.23][822.23](Clerk) Hey![823.23][823.23](Clerk) Hey![824.23][824.23](Clerk) Hey![825.23][825.23](Clerk) Hey![826.23][826.23](Clerk) Hey![827.23][827.23](Clerk) Hey![828.23][828.23](Clerk) Hey![829.23][829.23](Clerk) Hey![830.23][830.23](Clerk) Hey![831.23][831.23](Clerk) Hey![832.23][832.23](Clerk) Hey![833.23][833.23](Clerk) Hey![834.23][834.23](Clerk) Hey![835.23][835.23](Clerk) Hey![836.23][836.23](Clerk) Hey![837.23][837.23](Clerk) Hey![838.23][838.23](Clerk) Hey![839.23][839.23](Clerk) Hey![840.23][840.23](Clerk) Hey![841.23][841.23](Clerk) Hey![842.23][842.23](Clerk) Hey![843.23][843.23](Clerk) Hey![844.23][844.23](Clerk) Hey![845.23][845.23](Clerk) Hey![846.23][846.23](Clerk) Hey![847.23][847.23](Clerk) Hey![848.23][848.23](Clerk) Hey![849.23][849.23](Clerk) Hey![850.23][850.23](Clerk) Hey![851.23][851.23](Clerk) Hey![852.23][852.23](Clerk) Hey![853.23][853.23](Clerk) Hey![854.23][854.23](Clerk) Hey![855.23][855.23](Clerk) Hey![856.23][856.23](Clerk) Hey![857.23][857.23](Clerk) Hey![858.23][858.23](Clerk) Hey![859.23][859.23](Clerk) Hey![860.23][860.23](Clerk) Hey![861.23][861.23](Clerk) Hey![862.23][862.23](Clerk) Hey![863.23][863.23](Clerk) Hey![864.23][864.23](Clerk) Hey![865.23][865.23](Clerk) Hey![866.23][866.23](Clerk) Hey![867.23][867.23](Clerk) Hey![868.23][868.23](Clerk) Hey![869.23][869.23](Clerk) Hey![870.23][870.23](Clerk) Hey![871.23][871.23](Clerk) Hey![872.23][872.23](Clerk) Hey![873.23][873.23](Clerk) Hey![874.23][874.23](Clerk) Hey![875.23][875.23](Clerk) Hey![876.23][876.23](Clerk) Hey![877.23][877.23](Clerk) Hey![878.23][878.23](Clerk) Hey![879.23][879.23](Clerk) Hey![880.23][880.23](Clerk) Hey![881.23][881.23](Clerk) Hey![882.23][882.23](Clerk) Hey![883.23][883.23](Clerk) Hey![884.23][884.23](Clerk) Hey![885.23][885.23](Clerk) Hey![886.23][886.23](Clerk) Hey![887.23][887.23](Clerk) Hey![888.23][888.23](Clerk) Hey![889.23][889.23](Clerk) Hey![890.23][890.23](Clerk) Hey![891.23][891.23](Clerk) Hey![892.23][892.23](Clerk) Hey![893.23][893.23](Clerk) Hey![894.23][894.23](Clerk) Hey![895.23][895.23](Clerk) Hey![896.23][896.23](Clerk) Hey![897.23][897.23](Clerk) Hey![898.23][898.23](Clerk) Hey![899.23][899.23](Clerk) Hey![900.23][900.23](Clerk) Hey![901.23][901.23](Clerk) Hey![902.23][902.23](Clerk) Hey![903.23][903.23](Clerk) Hey![904.23][904.23](Clerk) Hey![905.23][905.23](Clerk) Hey![906.23][906.23](Clerk) Hey![907.23][907.23](Clerk) Hey![908.23][908.23](Clerk) Hey![909.23][909.23](Clerk) Hey![910.23][910.23](Clerk) Hey![911.23][911.23](Clerk) Hey![912.23][912.23](Clerk) Hey![913.23][913.23](Clerk) Hey![914.23][914.23](Clerk) Hey![915.23][915.23](Clerk) Hey![916.23][916.23](Clerk) Hey![917.23][917.23](Clerk) Hey![918.23][918.23](Clerk) Hey![919.23][919.23](Clerk) Hey![920.23][920.23](Clerk) Hey![921.23][921.23](Clerk) Hey![922.23][922.23](Clerk) Hey![923.23][923.23](Clerk) Hey![924.23][924.23](Clerk) Hey![925.23][925.23](Clerk) Hey![926.23][926.23](Clerk) Hey![927.23][927.23](Clerk) Hey![928.23][928.23](Clerk) Hey![929.23][929.23](Clerk) Hey![930.23][930.23](Clerk) Hey![931.23][931.23](Clerk) Hey![932.23][932.23](Clerk) Hey![933.23][933.23](Clerk) Hey![934.23][934.23](Clerk) Hey![935.23][935.23](Clerk) Hey![936.23][936.23](Clerk) Hey![937.23][937.23](Clerk) Hey![938.23][938.23](Clerk) Hey![939.23][939.23](Clerk) Hey![940.23][940.23](Clerk) Hey![941.23][941.23](Clerk) Hey![942.23][942.23](Clerk) Hey![943.23][943.23](Clerk) Hey![944.23][944.23](Clerk) Hey![945.23][945.23](Clerk) Hey![946.23][946.23](Clerk) Hey![947.23][947.23](Clerk) Hey![948.23][948.23](Clerk) Hey![949.23][949.23](Clerk) Hey![950.23][950.23](Clerk) Hey![951.23][951.23](Clerk) Hey![952.23][952.23](Clerk) Hey![953.23][953.23](Clerk) Hey![954.23][954.23](Clerk) Hey![955.23][955.23](Clerk) Hey![956.23][956.23](Clerk) Hey![957.23][957.23](Clerk) Hey![958.23][958.23](Clerk) Hey![959.23][959.23](Clerk) Hey![960.23][960.23](Clerk) Hey![961.23][961.23](Clerk) Hey![962.23][962.23](Clerk) Hey![963.23][963.23](Clerk) Hey![964.23][964.23](Clerk) Hey![965.23][965.23](Clerk) Hey![966.23][966.23](Clerk) Hey![967.23][967.23](Clerk) Hey![968.23][968.23](Clerk) Hey![969.23][969.23](Clerk) Hey![970.23][970.23](Clerk) Hey![971.23][971.23](Clerk) Hey![972.23][972.23](Clerk) Hey![973.23][973.23](Clerk) Hey![974.23][974.23](Clerk) Hey![975.23][975.23](Clerk) Hey![976.23][976.23](Clerk) Hey![977.23][977.23](Clerk) Hey![978.23][978.23](Clerk) Hey![979.23][979.23](Clerk) Hey![980.23][980.23](Clerk) Hey![981.23][981.23](Clerk) Hey![982.23][982.23](Clerk) Hey![983.23][983.23](Clerk) Hey![984.23][984.23](Clerk) Hey![985.23][985.23](Clerk) Hey![986.23][986.23](Clerk) Hey![987.23][987.23](Clerk) Hey!
...of our, like I said earlier, this is a 30-minute portion of our council meeting if needed. The council can't take action on the topics raised by the speakers and we cannot discuss with the speakers because the topics are not listed on our agenda, so they could violate open meetings laws. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation? They can come up and use this microphone and podium in front. Anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Hall. And address is 4915 West Burnham. And here to address a few comments about potential redevelopment of 53rd and Burnham, which I think everyone's aware of. Thank you. I want to reiterate how polluted the site is. We've got, I don't know how much for your environment, but there are underground storage tanks that are still on the property. There's free, there's petroleum product on the groundwater from previously removed underground storage tanks. There's tetrachlorethylene, volatile organic compound in a hotspot in an area that has to be removed. There's a lead hotspot, and there are widespread soil impacts from metals, PAHs, volatile organic compounds, and petroleum hydrocarbons. So it's a very complicated pollution from 100 years of activity on the site. The groundwater is impacted, as I mentioned, and volatile organic, volatile organic compound vapors are an issue for future redevelopment. So those are all the challenges on the environmental side, which is why we would need a partnership with the city on the site. I believe the neighbors deserve this site to be cleaned up. It's been 30 years since that industrial activity ended, and we would certainly want as many West Dallas companies to be part of that work for the cleanup and the construction on the site, to create economic activity here in the city. As we know, the site's been vacant for 30 years, no economic activity. And as you know, your, the city TIF that was created on the site in 2011 says that the site's not going to be redeveloped without city assistance in the form of a TIF or other assistance on the cleanup. So that's from the actual previous TIF on the site. I want to reiterate again, I'm proposing developer-funded TIF, so there's no dollar coming from the city, no funds being diverted from current taxpayers. So there's really no financial risk. There's only upside, because again, it's been vacant for 30 years, no economic activity. It's time to get it back into the market, so it can help the city. It's currently zoned, as you know, for light industrial. It's consistent with the comp plan, so everything I'm proposing is already zoned properly and is already consistent with the plan that the city has approved. The proposed fulfillment center, as one option, is not a distribution center. I think there's some confusion on that before. A distribution center means a big building where you bring stuff in, and there aren't many workers, and it just goes out the back door. A fulfillment center has very, it's very labor-intensive. So this would be 300-plus jobs, okay? So it's a very active site. It's not a distribution center. It's a fulfillment center with 300 parking jobs, or parking spots. So even if the proposed tenant were to move out in the future, this would be a terrific building with a lot of parking that could attract like a corporate headquarters or a tech company, because certain companies need a lot of parking, right? Like tech companies do and corporate headquarters do. So it'd still be a very flexible site, even if this proposed tenant moved out. This proposed tenant also has very good benefits, as I sent you information on that, which adds another 30% to the wage they're paying. So either way, whether it's Amazon or not Amazon, if we do more of a multi-tenant approach, it's a very similar economic investment of about $12 to $15 million after the site's cleaned up. So the economics are similar. If it's Amazon, it's a brand-new operation for Amazon. This is not moving jobs from another city. These are new jobs. And so in terms of economic activity, you have the $12 to $15 million of investment, but you also have the $3 million cleanup. So it's really 15 to 18 million of economic activity that would be spent on that site. And again, with as many West Dallas contractors as we can get in there. And the importance of the jobs is if we have 300 or 400 people at that site, those are 300, 300 or 400 people who can shop in West Dallas, who can have their hair done in West Dallas, who can eat in West Dallas, attend churches in West Dallas. So it obviously spills over to a lot of different places, so I'd love to be a great partner with you on the site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hall. That is the five-minute timer for those that did not realize. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? I believe there was a correspondence we received today that somebody said they were going to be here. Okay. Then we will close citizen participation, and we will move on to item F on our agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. The page number, I'm sorry, page number one has those room numbers listed. Going on to page two, item G. I do not have a mayor's report this evening. Moving to item H, are there any reports from the alderpersons?
Mr. Mayor?
Who was that? Alderman Stefanski?
Just like to welcome, after attending the grand opening for Kerry's Christie's this last week, just want to welcome them to the city.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I think there's an amendment to the minutes that Alderman Stefanski would like to make.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes to change my vote on item 19, which was Resolution 2020-0523. I'd like to change my vote to no.
I see that that caused our city attorney to spring to his feet, so I am going to...
Mr. Mayor, if there's interest in amending the minutes in this fashion, I'd recommend doing so and ensuring that everyone has made their amendments at one time to understand whether there's going to be a change in the ultimate vote. If it does not ultimately change the vote, then it's, it's not the preferred way of doing it, but it is a way to do it. But obviously, you wouldn't want to change a vote by amending the minutes on the next following meeting. So if there are any of the councilmembers who intend to change their votes, they should make that amendment right now while it's still pending.
I plan to change...
I'll take the motion.
Alderperson Keen.
Okay?
Alderperson Keen.
Yes, I move to change my vote from the last time to the no.
From an I to a no?
Yes, but it shouldn't change the outcome of...
Correct. That will put us at a seven to three, I believe. Is there anybody else? Okay.
Wait.
Then I move, then I move that the minutes of the common council meeting of September 15th, 2020 be approved as amended.
I'll second it.
Okay, there is a motion with a second by Alderman Vitale. Is there no, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you. Going on to item J, item's not referred to committee. I'll ask for a motion to send items two through five to our city attorney.
To move.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Reinkie, second by Alderperson Keen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry's. Item six, we do have a motion for reconsideration.
Shall move.
Was it not necessary now?
Is that moot now?
No, no. It's not necessary.
Okay. So then we'll, I'm sorry, Alderman Stefanski?
I was going to make a motion to place on file.
Okay.
I'll second that. That motion to place on file.
Okay. There is a motion and a second to place on file. Any discussion?
At this point in time, I believe the chair could rule the motion out of order because there has been a final decision made on this matter, and the only way it would come back before the council is through a motion to reconsider. So the only motion that would be in order would be a motion to reconsider. Effectively, what the motion was is the current status of this, of this matter. It has been received and placed on file, and so there's no need to do so again.
So what are you telling me?
Unless there's interest, the only motion that's in order right now would be to, a motion to reconsider if there's a desire from the council to reopen this matter. Otherwise, it would remain placed on file.
Okay. So does anybody wish to make that motion?
I'll make the motion for reconsideration for further discussions.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would advise you to rule it out of order because only someone who voted in the affirmative would be able to make that motion at this time.
Correct. And is that as the affirmative from the original meeting or the affirmative from the amended minutes?
The original meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. So if I do not hear any...
If there's no motion, then it just dies.
Correct.
So we should just let it die.
I do not hear a motion to reconsider, then.
Tracy could make the motion.
Okay. Then we will move on to item K. Standing committee reports.
Further discussion.
We have license and health. Chairman Vitale, would we read those out with the balance?
Yeah, we'd like to read them out from seven through eight. We have some of a seven to place on file and...
Alderman Vitale, do you want to, do you want to do that with the rest of them after recess?
No, we'll do all of them now, because I think they've been already approved and placed on file or denial.
So Rebecca, maybe you can read them out?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Stefanski.
On item number eight, can we, I'm sorry, item seven, can we pull that one out separately?
Sure.
Thank you.
So then it'll, item clerk, items eight through 15?
License and health committee recommended denial of items eight, nine, 11, 12, and 13, and placing on file items 14 and 15.
Shall move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion from the committee chair to approve.
Second.
We don't need a second?
Thank you.
Chair.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I wasn't ready for this.
Neither was I.
Item number 10 was recommended for approval.
Approval, that one, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve. There's no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items eight through 15, Kerry? And then item seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Stefanski.
I have to abstain from this vote as some evidence was brought to me after the committee meeting and the vote happened, so I need to abstain from the vote on number seven.
So on item seven, which was to place on file? Chairman Vitale, do you want to move approval of that piece of the report?
Yeah, I move for approval and denial of the, and place on file of all the reports that were given tonight.
Any discussion on item seven? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I was just going to read them out as abstentions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Any opposed? And then one abstention. Alderman Stefanski. So nine to zero to one, the motion carries. Brings us to item L.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
So motion with a second by Alderperson Reinkie? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess.
$441.83, where the resolution says $441.33.
I'll second the amendment.
Yeah, on the amendment, we have a motion and a second. On the amendment, well, as long as we all understand that we're passing this as amended, I think we can vote on the whole thing as amended. And so, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 18 is a resolution approving the terms and conditions of an in-store forgivable economic development loan to Timber Holdings Doing Businesses.
Not 17.
I did skip that. Thank you very much. Item 17, resolution to approve the year 2021 operation plan for downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District and to adopt a special assessment method as stated therein.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yeah, Patrick?
This is just the introduction, and at the next council meeting, we have a public hearing for the statute on the special assessment.
Thank you, Patrick. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And now, item 18, which I tried to read out earlier. Resolution approving the terms and conditions of an in-store forgivable economic development loan to Timber Holdings Doing Businesses Double B Barbecue.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion from Alderman Lysick and a second from Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 19, resolution approving sub-grantee agreements and interdepartmental agreements by and between the city of West Dallas, very, our community block grant recipients.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderperson Keen and a second from Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter an agreement with authorize.net. Ms. Grill, can you tell us what is authorize.net?
Authorize.net is an online payment gateway. It will also allow us to take credit cards in person and out in the field.
Like right here at City Hall, take credit cards?
Yes.
Oh, that'd be good.
And other buildings, too.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Alderperson Keen and a second from Alderman Weigel. Any discussion?
Tenorio.
Tenorio.
Tenorio, oh, sorry, Angelito. All in, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 21, a resolution relative to continuing the contract with CivMec for workers' comp administrative services.
Move approval. Second.
Motion from Alderman Weigel and a second from Alderman Lysick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 22, resolution amending the authorization given the city administrator entering a contract professional service agreement, Robert Half.
Move for approval.
A motion from Alderman Lysick?
Second.
A second from Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 23, a resolution to set the 2021 schedule of fees for the city of West Dallas.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grill?
This is being introduced so that it could, people would have time to review and such. We could discuss it at a subsequent meeting. There's some changes that I believe the Public Works, the Board of Public Works is going to be discussing related to Public Works charges, so it would be better to hold it at this time.
Sounds good. Is there any objection to holding this item? All right, we'll hold item number 23. Item 24, initial resolution authorizing two-point outlet, actually, we're going to take a bunch of these together.
Yeah.
We can take items 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28 all together. So can I have a motion on items 24 through 28?
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, Ms. Moon, yes.
Sure, I was just going to preface this by saying this was the, the wheels for this kind of was set in motion with the approval of the 2020 capital improvement program, so this is the execution of the financing for that. Todd Taves is here from Ellers if you guys would like to go through the pre-sale report. Certainly, I will leave you copies of these, but...
Yeah, thank you. I don't think it's necessary to go through that at this point unless somebody from the committee feels otherwise. All right. So we have Alderman Weigel.
Mr. Chair, not on this issue, I was just going to ask, brief indulgence, I realize there's a citizen here in this committee who means to be in a public works committee right now downstairs. If I could just have a minute to direct him down there?
Sure. And they're not downstairs, they're in room 128, Marty. All right, any further discussion on items 24 through 28? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 29 is a resolution directing publication of notice to electors.
Move approval. Second.
A motion from Alderman Weigel, a second from Alderman Tenorio. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 30, resolution to approve refund of property taxes.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And item 31, resolution relative to renewal of the agreement with Wisconsin Community Services Incorporated for the mediation center.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion from Alderperson Keen and a second from Alderman Weigel. Is there any discussion?
Lysick.
Oh, Lysick, yeah, thank you. Alderman Lysick, was the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I have a way of solving that, is just not identifying who paid the motion and the second it is. Item 32, we already addressed in our standalone meeting beforehand, and we, we didn't act on that.
No, we didn't act on it.
Yeah, we, can I have a motion to place on file, the audit report?
So moved.
Financial report.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And communication from the city administrator clerk requesting approval to accept the COVID-19 response grant from Center for Tech and Civic Life Team?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And item 34, resolution to approve the purchase of express vote machines from Election Systems and Software.
Move for approval.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I just had a question. How many are we getting or looking to purchase?
Possibly up to 15, but it probably will be about 10, because I have to measure the expenses that it, for cost, for staffing, and so just want to make sure that we're not expending too much on the machines when we have so much money we need to spend with getting the absentee ballots ready and the in-person absentee voting, which is going to be pretty extensive in two, less than two weeks.
Right. And how many do we have now?
I believe we have five or six.
Okay.
Or, yeah, I think it's around there. Five, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Weigel.
That's for this election? That's for this next month? This hardware's for next month?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And we will be able to get it for that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 35, communication from the director of Public Works to approve an exception to the hiring freeze and grant permission to fill a vacant fleet superintendent position.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And communication, director of Public Works to approve the exception to a hiring freeze to grant permission to fill a vacant electrical superintendent position.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And communication from the director of Public Works to approve an exception to a hiring freeze to grant permission to fill the upcoming vacant equipment operator specialist position.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And item 38, we already did approve in our prior meeting, and is there anything else to properly come before the administration of finance committee?
We adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Safety and Development Committee will come to order.
He didn't want to use it.
Item 51 on your agenda, this item is going to be held till the next meeting. The applicant, if they requested the ordinance change, cannot make it this evening yet. He was exposed to COVID, so he'd like to make an appearance to speak to us about it or at least be here at the meeting. So we agreed to hold it until the next... next, uh, meeting. Item fifty-two, um, is a resolution, um, to impose a temp- temporary moratorium, and I understand there's, uh, maybe some people who want to speak to that, um, and we're going to hold that issue until the rest, uh, Alderman, uh, one of the older persons in the, on one of the other committees asks to be present, so we're going to hold it till the entire, uh, council can be here if they cho- choose. Um, item fifty-four is a, uh, or item fifty, well, fifty-three. Fifty-three is a resolution to impose, uh, temporary moratorium on industrial uses for the properties at sixty-five hundred West Washington, thirteen-twenty-three South Sixty-Fifth, thirteen-thirty-nine to thirteen-forty-seven South, South Sixty-Fifth Street.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is the Motor Castings, uh, area properties. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item fifty-four is a resolution to consider an amendment to the development agreement by and between GGOO Three LLC and the City of West Dallas regarding property located at seventy-thirty West National Avenue and fifteen star star South Seventy-first Street. Mr. Steeble.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think you received a, uh, email on your desk that I had set up this afternoon to kind of laser the problem. Uh, there was a delay at the county government trying to get this approved, uh, it's a long delay, and now it's extended the developers' construction period well into winter, and now the developer has to pay consultant, contractor, additional fee for winter construction, and that's pretty much the size of it. That's, it's estimated at ninety-five thousand, that's hopefully the worst case. Uh, if that should be approved, uh, we have in the resolution to hire an outside consultant that the banks normally hire to monitor the cost, to make sure that if it is what it is, so if it's less, we get the value of the less. And, uh, the owner is also here in the back, if anybody has any questions with, uh, with the dentist. If, or if you have any additional questions, I could answer them. I do want to point out that, uh, the value of the building is quite hi- high. It's a two-story, uh, medical office building, which is a very desirable thing to have in any community, particularly in that corridor. It really has a big positive impact on the character, and the taxable value is about ninety-two thousand, according to the city assessor, that's projected. So if you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, Mr. Steeble, uh, speaking for myself, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with having to spend more money to get this development here. Um, it's a, it's a great development and, and, and I think it would be a real boon to the area, and I'm not pleased with the action taken by the county board to delay this. That's costing the developer the additional funds, uh, to, to have the construction during the winter. Um, I've looked at the, um, effects, and it appears as though the additional funds can be paid back in one year of property taxes. Am I correct in what I was reading?
That is correct, sir.
Um, seeing that, I, I guess, um, I would go along with, uh, this amendment, uh, to the development agreement.
I move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Alderman Weigel?
I, I'd like to reiterate your comments on this. It's a shame that, uh, the citizens of West Dallas are going to have to pay for the foot dragging of the Milwaukee County Board of Supervisors. This could have been handled months ago. Uh, I don't know if the shovels could be in the ground by now, but it certainly could have been done, and I, I guess I don't understand the reasoning for it, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it, I, the way I see it, it's the highest and best use for that property right now. Looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a good addition with good jobs and good taxable value, so... That's it. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And then we have item fifty-five's communication from, is it Cryet? Is that the right pronunciation? Crete Group expressing their company's interest in the purchasing of colder site. Um, I think you want to make a presentation to, to the committee this evening, and if, if, if I ask, we're going to hold off until the rest of the council is able to join us so that they can hear your presentation as well as just the committee, if that's acceptable to you. Um, so we're going to take a, a recess until they finish their two, their committee meeting in the other room, and then they'll join us in here.
All right, so what's going to happen tonight?
It's going to happen tonight, right here. I don't know how much longer it's going to take them, five minutes, fifteen minutes?
Okay, then we only have to do-
An hour. I, I really can't say how long it's going to take them. So, it is, uh, we'll stand in recess until the conclusion of the Public Works and License Committee meetings.
And advisory.
And advisory.
pardon me, the Crete Group, expressing their company's interest in purchasing the Kolder site located at 331-333-South 108 Street. Is there a representative here from the Crete Group?
Good evening. I'm Doug Sutter with Keller Incorporated. I have had the honor and the privilege of working for the Crete family at several other sites around the state. And there are six of us here tonight that would like to talk to you about what Crete would like to do at the Kolder site.
You know, we're gonna limit your talking here. I told staff ahead of time that you'd be permitted to speak, but keep your comments brief. We figure five minutes, maybe a little longer than that. So it's not five minutes for six people. I mean, five minutes each. So please be brief.
We will. I'm gonna be running the board, so.
All right, thank you. And understood, we'll be brief. We just want to blow through a couple of these slides as well, so you can place your attention up there as we speak.
Great.
I'm David Crete. I'm the president of Crete Group, as well as the third generation owner of the organization. We've been around since 1951. My grandfather founded the company as a Mack Trucks distributor. Previously, the site where we're located today, which is 44th and Blue Mound in the city of Milwaukee, was a factory-owned Mack truck branch, and for about 40, 50 years. And at that point, my grandfather moved from New York and purchased the company, and the rest is history. Quickly, I'm gonna just talk about why I want to be in West Alice, and then a couple of these other gentlemen have some comments. As I mentioned, 44th and Blue Mound, we've been there since the founding of the company. The site is very, very small now. It's pretty landlocked. It's about four acres. Ideally, in our business, we seek anywhere between 10 and 15 acre lots, and for plethora of different activity with our customers and equipment. West Alice is very clearly in the center, center of the county, and virtually all of our customers, as they exist today, serving greater Milwaukee, as well as the conquests or prospects that we'd like to do business with, are in and around this Kolder site. As well as, in addition to that, I should say, the site itself, which Mike will speak to in a sec, is very easily accessible. Our customers are constantly on the highway and require easy on and off of 94. On top of all of that, I'll mention our employees. In Milwaukee alone, we have roughly 75 employees between our dealership and our corporate headquarters. And all of those employees would move from downtown and 44th and Blue Mound to the West Alice site, where we would combine operations between dealership and corporate. The corporate team, which I'm sure we have a slide in the handout, is roughly 35 to 40 individuals, all white collar jobs. And on the dealership side of the house, there's 50-plus employees that are blue collar in nature. In addition, last comment would be, typically, we have a lot of corporate fly-ins from Greensboro in Pennsylvania, and really throughout all of the country, whether that's customers or employees from Mack Corporate or Volvo Corporate, that come to visit us and visit our customers. And I envision them staying in West Alice near, proximally to our place of business. So that's as brief as I can possibly be. There's a whole bunch of reasons, in addition, why I would want to be in West Alice, but I think as we pile on with a couple of the other talks, it'll come together. So Mike?
Good evening. I'm Mike Parker, Senior Vice President with CBRE, the commercial real estate company. I have a couple pages of notes, but I think we're gonna skip those. Just want to tell you that we have been working with the Crete Group for a little bit over five years to find an ideal location for them, to be able to combine their corporate operations and the Milwaukee operations into a very viable site. The Kolder site, we did some exploring with, and we feel it is an ideal site for this type of business. It brings, will bring quality to West Alice, and it is something that I'm sure the Crete Group will be very proud of when they're here. So I'm gonna turn this over to Dan Gentius, Attorney Dan Gentius, for the rest of this.
I'll be brief as well. My name is Dan Gentius. I'm an attorney with Hush Blackwell here in Milwaukee and representing Crete Truck. What I'm here to say is, to speak a little bit about the Crete Group's vision for this use and how it fits with the city's vision for the Highway 100 corridor. We know that the city's been very involved with developing a long-term plan, a vision for the future of the corridor. And we believe strongly that this type of mixed commercial office, or corporate offices and dealership for Crete Trucks, or Crete Group Trucks, would fit very nicely at the Kolder site as the gateway into West Alice along the Highway 100 corridor. The, and that, the overall look and feel of the, of this use over the long haul will fit nicely with the vision that the city has for the corridor. It's consistent, we know, with at least some of the planning that's been done by the Gensler firm. We saw that some of the work that's, or that Gensler's prepared that identifies the east side of Highway 100 for some future development, including Flex Industrial. This would mesh well with that overall development. So we hope that you'll agree that what Crete hopes is a long-term and very fruitful move to West Alice will be consistent with what West Alice wants for its growth and future development along Highway 100. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Steve Klesik, and I am the Crete's architect. And I have been the architect for many of their projects across the state of Wisconsin. I'm here to dispel some misconceptions about what a trucking facility is like in 2020. And what you see up here, but maybe doesn't really matter, I'll concentrate your attention to the site plan on the right. The brown is the, the building itself. The traffic for this truck facility, I want you to understand, is such that they are selling new trucks, and they are repairing trucks at this facility. Plus, they have two office complexes inside. So I'm going to go to this plan. What you're seeing there in orange is the truck dealership. Just so you understand what's happening in this building, I thought it was important for this group to understand what's actually occurring inside this building. But all of the orange, orange is showroom and offices for the Milwaukee dealership. The blue, right above the orange, is the corporate offices for the Crete corporate headquarters. The yellow is additional office space that they can grow into. So when you really think about this facility, there's as much office space as there is truck repair. The green, or olive, is the actual truck repair area. And the orange inside of that area is the offices and management that serves the repair, meaning service managers and break rooms and things like that. And then, the pink is the parts storage. Of course, these trucks need parts when they break down, and that's the parts storage. And then the blue, again to the far right, is actually a truck, new truck delivery bay. So when you look at that facility, I want you to keep in mind that this is way more than just a truck repair facility. It's a beautiful, state-of-the-art truck dealership, and I would think of it as a truck dealership. And then, these are some of the elevations, but I'm gonna go back to the front elevation. I'll draw your attention here. If you've been to this facility currently today, I know this may sound self-serving, but this is the front entrance to the Kolders now, and this is what it could become if you allow us to bring the Crete Group to this building. It will be a state-of-the-art, national brand image design. This is what Mack Truck is promoting for its dealers. And this is what this facility could look like if you allow us to enhance this building with these features. I won't get into all the materials. That can be somewhat lengthy in presentation, so what I will do is talk a little bit about the, talk a little bit about the north. the north wall. So the plan as it lays, let's assume that the top of the plan is the north, that what I just described, that new truck delivery area, I want to just describe that wall for now, that north-facing wall, because there's been a fair amount of discussion about what that wall could look like. And I brought this drawing along because we didn't have it in our PowerPoint, but this represents that north wall that faces the trail. And I know that you want that to look good. And so we actually researched some of the things that you're proud of, and I guess we're all proud of, in the state of Wisconsin, your state fair. And we see the branding that you've developed. We see the efforts that you've put into your West Dallas image program, and I know you're proud of your heritage in Alice Chalmers. I grew up on a dairy farm, and so was I. So these are some ideas that could be put on a blank canvas that David Crete has allowed me to create for you, so we are going to smooth that wall out, put new material there that could be a blank canvas for whatever this group and the Crete Group decides is appropriate murals that would enhance that view of the building. So I'll finish and let, I just wanted to show you one more thing. I was at David Crete's facility tonight. As we were walking out, these trucks are beautiful. I just grabbed this literature right off of his counter. What we have sitting in front of there is a beautiful truck and a beautiful building, and I can guarantee you that it will look nicer than it looks today, and it'll be an enhancement to your community.
Are we ready for questions? Yeah, I guess I'll just, sure, I can wrap up. Again, thank you very much for the consideration. Just to put some numbers to this whole thing here, roughly, the facility is assessed, the tax assessment is just north of $6 million. Am I correct in saying that? And the work we've done with Keller so far, which I plan on beating him down on mercilessly, is about $20 million to renovate this site. And again, to put it in perspective, at nearly 200,000 square feet, this would be the largest Mack and Volvo truck dealership in the country, which very much draws the attention from our corporate partners at Mack Trucks and Volvo, which I'm sure you've heard the names, but they, you know, the Volvo Group globally is the largest manufacturer of heavy-duty engines globally. So they're bona fide, global-scope companies. We're the fourth-largest Mack Truck dealer in the world, quite frankly. Our scope is really North America, but we're the fourth-largest in the world, and this is something that I'd be really, really proud if we could bring to fruition and fulfill another 100 years of our organization. So, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We're glad that you're interested in West Dallas. That's certainly encouraging for us. And as you know, we have another item on the agenda that's going to discuss a temporary moratorium on the industrial uses of that site. So we're going to move on to that, item 52 right now. This communication will stay in committee for further action at a later date. Right now, item 52 is a resolution to impose a temporary moratorium on industrial uses at the properties located at 331, 333 South 108 Street and the 500 blocks south of 108 Street. You referenced the Gensler study, and this is part of our look at the Highway 100 corridor and how we can improve the usage and the uses on Highway 100 and make them more appealing to our residents and provide a better tax base for the community. We want to take a look at having this moratorium so that we can further study what should be going into a site such as this, and we certainly don't want to, because it's owned industrial right now, I think if you wanted to put your use in there, even under present zoning, you would need a special use under that zoning. So, you know, it isn't an automatic that the zoning allows your usage, because it is only allowed as a special use. So the motion before, or the issue before the council right now is, do we want to impose a temporary moratorium on industrial uses for, the proposal is for a six-month period. It doesn't have to last that long, and just because a moratorium is placed on it doesn't necessarily mean that the zoning will be changed. It means we want to take a look at it and don't want any, want to preclude, or don't want any development in there that would preclude any changes that we might be looking at. Is there any discussion?
I move approval of item 52.
There's a motion to approve item 52.
A second.
It's been seconded by Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This will be reported out in a couple of minutes at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn Safety and Development Committee?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry.
Item 54, with the 70th and Greenberry, 70th and National, $90,000.
We approved it. Five to nothing.
And we're going to give them 90 grand?
95, I think it is. Yes.
We will call the common council back to order. I'll ask our clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysik.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Wrote.
Here.
Ten in favor.
Motion carries. I believe that concludes Administration and Finance. We will now go on to Public Works Committee chaired by Alderman Wrote. I will ask our clerk to read out the report from Public Works.
The Public Works Committee recommended approval of items 39 to 42, 44 through 45, and denial of item 43.
I move in accordance of the committee report, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any discussion on the Public Works Committee report? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Motion carries. I believe that concludes Administration and Finance. We will now go on to Public Works Committee chaired by Alderman Wrote. I will ask our clerk to read out the report from Public Works.
The Public Works Committee recommended approval of items 39 to 42, 44 through 45, and denial of item 43.
I move in accordance of the committee report, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any discussion on the Public Works Committee report? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Motion carries. I believe that concludes Administration and Finance. We will now go on to Public Works Committee chaired by Alderman Wrote. I will ask our clerk to read out the report from Public Works.
The Public Works Committee recommended approval of items 39 to 42, 44 through 45, and denial of item 43.
I move in accordance of the committee report, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any discussion on the Public Works Committee report? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. We will proceed to the Safety and Development Committee chaired by Alderman Lysik. I will ask the clerk to read out that report.
The Safety and Development Committee recommended...
Mayor Devine? Or, I'm sorry, yes. Could we read out some of these separately? Or are you going to?
We can.
Which one?
Which I know.
52, 53, and 50...
Four?
Yes, the two moratoriums and the resolution to consider the 70th Street, 70th and National property.
Then we can just take them all separately, because there's only four, right? The one stays in committee?
And 51 was held tonight, correct?
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed 51.
It's held.
Okay.
So I might as well read it all separately.
So this is 52, correct?
Item 52, the Safety and Development Committee recommended approval.
I move for approval of item 52.
Thank you. Any discussion on item 52?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale?
Yeah, just to enlighten myself in reference of this temporary moratorium, you know, for the questions of, you know, why are we doing this? I mean, to me, I mean, it's something really don't come across that often. So what's the main reasons for us to place, you know, this issue about the moratorium? You know, what's the purpose for it? I mean, why would, it be six months for somebody really to be able to, you know, come forward requesting some type of business? I mean, I'd just like to be clarified, what's the reason of we imposing this moratorium? You know, I mean, I know it's within the state statute, within the city is able to pursue that, you know, to move ahead with something like that, but what's the purpose for it, really? Why are we doing this? You know, I mean, that's one thing I'd like to be more informed or enlightened, you know, I mean, maybe I'm too stupid to know, you know, really. I mean, what's the reason we're doing that? You know, that's one thing I would like to know.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysik?
Alderman Vitale, the reason this is being done, if you remember, a short time ago, we rezoned the property across the street on the east side of Highway 100 in that neighborhood from industrial to heavy commercial. And the reason for that was to be consistent with the Gensler study, which recommended that we take a look at the uses along Highway 100 corridor and create more of a commercial corridor rather than an industrial corridor in some of those areas. So that was the thought on the east side, and that is a thought on this particular property. The use was being used as commercial and was thought that we should, but the zoning was heavier zoning, manufacturing, and so the idea was to make it consistent with what the current use was. Now, these people have come in recently, you know, it happens that at the same time, we're looking at one thing and they're looking to come in to develop, and a moratorium doesn't preclude us from keeping the zoning to change. It just means we want to look at it and say, is this what we want for this area? The study indicated it should be commercial, and that's what we want to take a look at. Do we want it to be a heavy manufacturing district? Or do we want it to be light manufacturing? Do we want it to be commercial? Or do we want it to be residential with apartments? I mean, it's something that Planning Department and the council has to take a look at. What are our thoughts for the future of this area? We can keep it the same ultimately. That may be our decision. Our decision may be to change it. It's going to rely heavily on the older persons from the district. I'm going to weigh my thoughts on this and my decision on this heavily on their recommendations because they represent the area. And I'm going to consider this moratorium. I'm going to vote in favor of it right now, as I did in committee, and let's talk about it for the next period of time. This moratorium, we say six months, it doesn't have to last that long. Maybe we can make a decision faster than that. But I think it's something we want to sit back and consider before we go willy-nilly into developing something that we may be sorry for down the road.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Lysik. Mr. Mayor, you know, the fact is that based that I know the area pretty well, you know, just south of that, you have a printing company that's been there for over 20 years now. So that's, I mean, I call manufacturing, right? So it's really within that areas, it's not really, you know, what I call more other businesses that I can recall, really. I mean, I know there's some most satellites of businesses in that area, south of that, but that's why I'm kind of, you know, concerned about why the fact we're doing this, you know. Colder's been closed down for a while already, you know, I mean, so I'm just wondering, you know, the reason for us to put that, the moratorium for six months. So, like I say, I just feel a little uncomfortable, you know, I mean, that's the idea, maybe it's good, you know, but the fact that is, there is no, really, within the area, there is no residential, really per se, you know, there's not really, so there's a free wages north of that, you know, so, I mean, that's fine if we wish to move forward some way that for six months, I mean, but really, I'm not too thrilled about it, really, in fairness. I'm not.
Chairman Lysik?
It's me this time.
Oh.
We switched, we shifted gavels, Alderman Wrote. Alderman Wrote?
When I wasn't looking. I believe this will be for John and Steve. I missed what the zoning is. Are they light manufacturing?
The current zoning is M1 light manufacturing.
What are these folks here?
A combination of commercial and light manufacturing.
So it wouldn't get into the heavy manufacturing?
No.
Okay, and then how long, because I know Alderman May was the Alderman, and how long, we waited a long time for that Gensler report, didn't we?
It started in, I think, August of 19, and finished up in beginning, early, early 2020, about February or so.
Okay. I'm sorry, it just seemed longer.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine?
Elder Person Grisham?
As one of the Alders in that district, in coming in as a new Alder, I paid close attention to the Highway 100 corridor study, and if I may say that, when we voted on the moratorium for the east side, it may have just been something that I overlooked. I thought that we were actually voting in that entire stretch of the corridor, which that moratorium would have been approved if we had included the west side to begin with. I think with the, for all intensive purposes, we're looking at this study that we put a lot of time and effort into for a vision of that gateway area, and as much as I can appreciate Alderman Vitale's viewpoint, yes, we want to draw business in, but we also want to make sure that that vision for that area is looked at for the betterment of the community in the long haul. So it's just not the matter of, okay, we're going to pop up this business here and there. There is a blueprint that is a recommendation that we're going to look ahead toward, and as one of the representatives, I appreciate you mentioning that will be very much included as far as the decision-making on that area.
Any other discussion? Elder Person Keen?
I'd like to share that sentiment. By approving this moratorium, it doesn't necessarily mean that, I don't believe that Crete Group wouldn't be an asset to West Dallas and in that location. I want to make that clear by voting on this. Again, it's just to give us more time, give us more details, to make sure it's the right place there, considering it is right over the bridge into West Dallas, and we did put so much time into it. Again, that I appreciate your guys' presentation, the work that you want to put in potentially on the north wall to represent West Dallas. So I just wanted to personally say that by passing this doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, Crete isn't a fit in that location. It's just that we have to really make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you.
And Mayor Devine?
I think Alderman Weigel had.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Alderman Haas.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Alderman Lysik said, and the word that Alderman Grisham brought up, gateway. As you come into the city from the north over Highway 100, you're on that bridge over the freeway, and I know that Gensler report specifically described this as the gateway to the city. You know, if you travel at all, you know, you're on the road, you turn off, you welcome You know, if you travel at all, you know, you're on the road, you turn off, you're welcomed to the new city, and sometimes that first glimpse of a city, when you get off the freeway, you know, and you're heading to your Airbnb, the hotel you booked, sometimes that first glimpse when you get off is very important for the impression on the city. And again, not to say that they're not going to build a world-class facility, and not to say that we're necessarily not going to welcome them with open arms, but I think a little time for us to consider this would be in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Haas.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Devine. And I just want to point out, I think someone said that Colders is closed. Colders isn't closed. It's not a big empty building, and they open tomorrow at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you, Alderman Haas. Any other discussion on item 52? Hearing none. I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
No.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
No.
Seven in favor, three opposed.
Motion carries. And we'll move on to item 53.
Item 53 was recommended for approval by the Safety and Development Committee.
I move for approval of item 53.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 53. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
No.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
No.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. And I believe that concludes Safety and Development. We'll go on to License and Health, chaired by Alderman Vitale.
Yes.
I'll ask the clerk to read out the report from the License and Health Committee.
The License and Health Committee recommended approval of items 55A and B. The rest were read out earlier.
56, we're holding it.
Correct.
56, right?
57, 58, 59 are also clear.
Yes.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve? Chairman?
Yes, move approval of the recommendation from the License and Health Committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? There's no discussion. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
No.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Those items carry. And we'll take up item 64.
The Advisory Committee recommended approval of item 64 on a three-to-two vote.
Chairperson Ranky, would you like to move approval of item 64?
Mm-hmm, I move approval of number 54.
64.
64.
Thank you. Any discussion on item 64? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
No.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
No.
Eight in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. And now, we have item 65.
The Advisory Committee recommended approval of item 65.
Chairperson Ranky.
I move approval of number 65, is it 55?
65.
65.
65.
Thank you. If there is no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.